Yeah, there's definitely a portion.
There's one part, it might have been the co-op piece.
Yes, there are some.
But, oh, I think the electric, the emphasis on trying to get everyone to use their electric battery operated things is not in there, right? We're going to come back to it and talk and try to talk that through.
I just thought we were going to revisit everything and this was the one yellow law, but that's fine.
We can read and go back.
What was the part that got sunsetted?
I think it was about giving the large co-op properties of the, figure it out before they have to redo their contracts again with their, with their landscapers.
Okay, go back and read and see.
Yeah, I think that's, that's what I remember anyway.
On that topic, Brian, I'm sorry, Connie, go ahead.
Oh, I'm just going to say, so we'll talk about it on the work session.
Yeah, we'll talk about it on the work session. We probably won't have recommendations from the VOC by that time, but we can talk about the registration law at the next work session.
Speaking of that, before the next regular session or work session, people should know that the spring cleanup period is over June 1st. And so you should get online or look at your published regulations or get one of these handouts and look at the regulations of what kicks in June 1st in terms of the prohibition of use of leaf blowers.
One other announcement, it's from the town of Mount Pleasant, who is due, the police chief, dear chief Saron, would like to officially recognize one of your patrol officers for his actions related to an incident that occurred in Mount Pleasant on April 29, 2018. At approximately 4:42 PM on that date, off-duty Irvington Police Officer Argangelo Libertor saw Carol Park in Thornwood with his family. Officer Libertor observed a coyote start to attack a local five-year-old girl. The girl's mother was with her, but was unable to fend off the attack. Officer Libertor directed his own family to safety and without hesitation interceded, stopping the attack and restraining the coyote until Mount Pleasant officers arrived. The animal was euthanized and the subsequent tests revealed that it was rabid, thus requiring Officer Libertor to submit to the battery of rabies vaccinations. I would like to commend Officer Libertor for his decisive actions that day. He chose to get involved while off-duty and exemplify what it means to take an oath, place his own personal safety in jeopardy to protect others. His selfless actions are a example to all of us to follow. On behalf of the town of Mount Pleasant, I offer sincere thank you to him for his actions. Very truly yours, Paul J. Olivia, Chief of Police. We obviously had thanked Officer Libertor as well, and he got great praise. Still in awe of his actions.
Wait, you read some great quotes the last time we talked about this.
One of my favorite was that he said he used his jujitsu training to subdue the coyote.
And then, yeah, something about strangling.
And I ran to the sound of screams, which, someone else, I saw a great social, social media comment, which was, that's exactly the way I parent all the time.
So Brian, one final announcement.
He really deserves a lot, a lot of credit.
I just want to announce, re-announce or continue to announce the Third Annual Public Safety Announcement Video Festival for high school in June. There's prizes and all that kind of thing. Winners announce at the Celebrate Irvington Day festivities at noon. The mayor will be handing out the awards. And for the previous two years, we've had some really great entries and the winners have been quite good. So looking forward to seeing what people are going to contribute this year, what students are going to contribute this year. Deadline is June 19, uh, June 10th, excuse me. And more details and application form and all that is online at Slow Down Irvington on, on Facebook.
I concur that the ones in the past were just as clever as could be. They're amazing. Yeah, they're really good.
It's a great talent.
Yes, talent that I certainly don't have. Thirty seconds of make your, get your message across.
As far as correspondence, the first three letters, Jessica Monzel and John Gordon's thing, Beth Proppers on the proposed parking on Buckout, and Ryan Turnstall's also about the petition for zoning of two Astro Street for parking. We already read the last meeting, so I just wanted to put them in here and officially publish them, since we've now done that. The next one is from Kristen Wilson, on behalf of Apoa. I'm actually going to hold that down until we get to the comprehensive plan, because rather summarize it rather than have me read the whole thing. And then I'll go to Dahlia Valdez's, which is kind of, it's also about the comprehensive plan, but I don't think she's here, so I figured it would just be a quick one. And it's actually something we've already taken out of the comprehensive plan. So, "I'm a Rivertown lifer, currently living in Tarrytown with children in the Irvington School District. It's come to my attention that the Villages of Irvington has put a proposal in their village's comprehensive plan, allowing the use of private to grow up the properties for large social events." I mean, I maybe I'll just skip it, it's obviously published here, we take that part out of the comprehensive plan, so I'll save it. Then lastly, Kathy Sears, "I respectfully request that our villages provide the resources for the DPF to pick up food scraps on a weekly basis at our farmer's market and deliver them to Greenberg drop-off site. My family and several neighbors want to participate in this wise recycling policy on a regular basis, where there has to be any infrastructure in place to do so. A drop-off at our lovely, at our lovely farmer's market makes perfect sense, and everyone can easily run in Greenberg to drop off scraps." Thank you, Kathy Sears. And Danny Robbins, 294 South Buckout Street.
So Brian, I know I heard today that the, some of the GPTF are setting up a meeting and it's great to talk about some of the options they've uncovered and based on our just last meeting discussion, so that's proven forward.
Yes.
To get some cost into Larry, I think is the concept.
Now onto public comments.
Is now the appropriate time to talk on the comprehensive plan?
If you want to talk on comprehensive, we can wait until we get to the comprehensive part, so we run through everything quickly. I guess that just leaves you to write nothing. Any questions or comments about that?
I just want to bring out item C for a quick comment, which is that about the snow and ice agreement that GPTF were, had some exchanges, and Larry answered them in terms of salt reduction and protection of the environment, of the river and the wildlife. And Leola just reported to me that Cornell Local Roads Program has a snow and ice control workshop, which they're planning, they've taught in the past, they're planning to teach this fall. It's time and place TBD. And the thought was, it might be very useful to send someone from DPW to get, to learn if there's something else that we don't know that can be implemented to further reduce the salt use.
Okay.
So I think they're going to be, she says that she thinks that Greg and James Englishby and Larry are on that mailing list from the Cornell group, but in any case, show forward information when it gets, when she gets it.
I think the only comment I have is on 6E, it says, "For a damaged park fence," which I thought was something exotic, I think it's just damaged park fence. It wasn't the fence around park, I found an arc that we did, I didn't know we had.
But there is a water.
Yeah, it was kind of cool. Wow, good. It's been raining a lot, so it made sense.
I saw a parrot deer up there.
Exactly. But I also make a motion to approve a consent agenda, if I have a second. All in favor?
All right.
Adoption of environmental findings received for review of the comprehensive plan update. Did you want to go over that, Mary Ann, or, I mean, we've kind of gone over it.
Yeah, well, just, just to make the point that the findings, like the draft, the generic environment, I mean, the generic environmental impact statement, just pretty much say that this comprehensive plan in and of itself isn't making it, when the individual actions that it recommends come up for an act, you know, whatever, local blog, the local blog, at that point, you're going to have to do SEACRA on each of the, on each of those changes. That's the point of a generic environmental impact statement. It could be a little more specific than this one, but guess how this one is, isn't it? It makes sense, given the kind of miscellaneous of the, of the implementation.
It's kind of a long resolution for an ambient.
Yeah, it's a simple idea, right. You're right.
Just to, yeah, if you want to make sure they have an opportunity to.
Yes, with the, you have.
Yeah, sure. Do you want to talk about the secret piece or the general comprehensive plan?
Well, it's kind of all part of the.
It is kind of all part together, but, so if you want to talk about it now.
Can I, you have to play with. Can I ask a first, just a simple question, Chris, is it okay?
Sure.
I have a very specific question about the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
In the comprehensive update in 2016, which is chapter three about actions for the 2003, I just have a question. In the open space in parks section, where we're talking about things that came out of the 2003 plan, sometimes it says policies are ongoing and sometimes it says open item. Is there a distinction between those two elements?
As I recall, yeah, I think open item means it hasn't been addressed at all. Where ongoing is it's been partially addressed.
So does that mean, but for open items, those are still things that are part of the current plan?
Being carried forward.
Being carried forward, yes.
So my only question.
That was a zigzag.
That was a big question, sorry.
I wish they were all that simple. That's a big book for a little question.
I'm sorry, it's a little focus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. Whoa. Maybe I'm tall enough.
There you go. The, the whole bracket.
There we go. Thanks. So I'm Kristen Wilson, I'm here representing Apoa, I'm a partner in the law firm of Blanchard and Wilson. We were at, I guess, the last work session perhaps of the comprehensive plan committee. So I've submitted a letter on behalf of Apoa that outlines generally what our concerns are with short-term rentals. I should start with, we applaud the board for removing the idea or the, of the use of historical structures for large group events. That was one of the key points of Apoa's opposition. The other point is short-term rentals. We can see a little bit of the writing on the wall and that it looks like the board is moving towards allowing some form of short-term rentals. Apoa would really like the board to focus and even include in the comprehensive plan update, a, a thought or bullet point of restricting short-term rentals by zoning district or neighborhood. I think zoning district might be easier and cleaner, but we do firmly believe that by allowing short-term rentals, even with regulations on a village-wide basis, would be harmful and detrimental to certain, certain neighborhoods within the village. So I know on pages, I think, 27 and 28 of the comprehensive plan update, there are several ideas that this board will consider when it adopts legislation, but we would ask this board tonight to consider, including in that comprehensive plan update itself, the idea of limiting even a permissible use for a short-term rental, zoning district by zoning district or neighborhood by neighborhood, so it's not a blanket permissive use throughout the village.
I think we did have some, it said perhaps by neighborhood, because we said we should limit it, the number, which the number could be zero, it could be five, whatever the neighborhood decides. So we did, I think we did add, we did add the, the phrase perhaps by neighborhood, I think is actually how it's written. We said we can limit it by area or something, and I think it said perhaps by neighborhood is how we actually have it in front of me, but.
Although, although I thought, frankly, I thought the intent was to limit the number, I mean, I guess you're right, a limit of a number could be zero, but I don't believe, I mean, although there's no reason, I don't, I don't think the comprehensive plan has to be amended, but certainly when you're enacting it, because I think you're asking not only for, for a limit on the number, is you don't want them allowed at all in certain areas.
I would like them prohibited, actually prohibited in certain, it might be easiest to prohibit them in certain residential districts, could do it by neighborhood as well, I suppose, I just, whatever is easiest to enforce. Some of the ideas you have in the comprehensive plan update are great ideas and will help the village, I think, go a great distance in regulating them, but I think to preserve those neighborhoods where it has been proven so far to be somewhat disruptive and detrimental to the neighborhood, to prohibit them is, is an important goal of Apoa's. And to that end, so I guess it would be permitting zero in those neighborhoods, but to that end, I've also drafted a list of teeth, if you will. I know it's a little, it might be premature, but assuming that the short-term rental use will be permitted in some areas of the village, we, Apoa and I have put together a list of other perhaps regulations that you can, could consider, including in draft legislation when that does come up before this board at some future point in time, so Larry, I will.
I guess I'm just a little concerned in passing, when you talk about other neighborhoods, it seems to me you're really speaking about one specific neighborhood, and so using the plural seems to be somewhat of a euphemism. You're really talking about not wanting it in Arthley Park.
I'm standing here tonight, yes, saying that for Arthley Park.
Just to cut through the euphemism, I think it's, if that's the thing, I'm not sure how we would go about isolating one specific neighborhood. I think it would have to be by zoning district type, residential type, I would imagine, I don't think, everything else sounds arbitrary at that.
I could see if like Sparrow Park came forward, does everyone allow it, or, you know, River Rude Association, you know, whatever, whatever group.
How do you implement that, if like, I mean, I know I'll talk about some other time, but how do you implement it to guarantee that, you know, how many people within Sparrow Park have to agree or disagree?
I think we'd have to figure that out.
That's what I mean, then it becomes, yeah.
And I think, I think we'd have to figure that out. I think you're right. I think something like, when there's a Sparrow Park Homeowners Association or whatever it's called, they're pretty organized and they, I think they're pretty representative. I mean, I already know Apoa is going to have one person that lives there that's going to be the opposite of this, you know, so it's like, I don't think it's going to be, I think you'd have to, at the time, figure out which neighborhoods is probably not permissible and is, you know, I think we'll have to come up with that determination at the time.
Right. And that, I mean, drafting of this legislation is not going to be very easy, we know that. We've talked about it for a year now, that it's a very difficult task, so my sense of this, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary Ann, is that the comprehensive plan provides enough of a framework to work within to draft legislation to respond to a request like this. How you do it is a whole different thing, and we're not going to decide that tonight, obviously, but I think that no matter what direction you go, you're, you're operating under enough of a, of an umbrella that this, this provides here, and I mean, I think the language is sufficiently broad enough to allow you to work within it. Does that make sense? Yeah, I mean, and so you've not made any decisions about neighborhoods or zoning districts or the exact implementation of it, but you've, you've already stated in your plan that, that there can be some restrictions, perhaps by neighborhood, I mean, so that, or limitations, I should say. So I think you have plenty to work within, wouldn't necessarily require a change in the plan, I don't think, so.
Is it possible?
Although, I, there's something to consider. I would have to think hard about the legality of it.
Sure. Oh, yeah, no, I.
Face it, it seems a little awkward.
Yeah.
Hence, hence the reason why you're not deciding.
That doesn't mean you can't consider it, it doesn't, it also doesn't mean you can do it.
Right.
So my question is, could we get to the point that we, in spite of the guidance of the comprehensive plan update, could we get to a point where we just say, heck, we can't figure out how to regulate this, so we're going to punt on it?
We had the water fund.
Sure.
We did that before.
I just want to be sure that everyone's clear on that, that if there's enough, you know, not just.
You can't talk to a agreement.
Not your workable solution.
And it doesn't happen.
Right, okay.
Comprehensive plan doesn't bind you to it.
Right. But if you do take action, you want the action to be consistent with the plan.
Right, it has to be consistent.
Right, and my point, and, you know, subject to what everyone thinks, my point is that if you were to talk about an idea that was presented and it turns out to be something that you could do legally, it, I think it would be consistent with what you've written here. I mean, it's.
See, the other thing is, the fact that it's in the comprehensive plan means, let's say, you, you, you're not of one mind on it and can't come up with a law that, you know, everybody's comfortable with, you know, pass it, but you get a petition from people in the village in the downtown and say, we really want you to allow B and B, they're going to rely on the comprehensive plan to say, but it's still, it's still your discretion. Any legislation you pass is in your discretion.
You also have other people potentially sitting here when it's finally discussed.
Right.
You might not have the same five people.
Right.
Sure. To say what happens in the future.
Exactly, so for.
You have something in mind.
No, I feel fine, I mean, but, no, I mean, I, but I, I take, I take Mary Ann's point that this document, I mean, I frankly am fine with the way it is now, I don't think we need to change anything with the comprehensive plan, but it seems that all of these things are then reconsidered and looked at in great detail when the legislation process happens and there's a public hearing and another public hearing, so.
And I do think the water fund reselling was probably the greatest example, the biggest example of that, we spent eighteen months trying to figure that out.
Yeah, it wasn't for lack of trying.
Yeah, if it's changing industrial, the water funds, I mean, calling it a debt.
Part of the public process. So I, as I'm standing, so for consistency purposes and for consideration, to be consistent with what's in the comprehensive plan, just an idea we wanted to provide to you very clearly tonight, and we will, of course, be presenting it again, is the idea of restricting it. I do think restricting it by zoning district is easier and less haphazard, and in terms of the numbers, I think the, this board should really consider whether zero is the correct number for, for certain areas as well. Thank you.
Well, we'll see if anyone else is.
Oh.
Rick?
Ashley.
Sorry, Rick, I'm trying to.
Excuse me, Rick Rizzolo, 120 North Broadway. The, I would just guard against the fact of not legislating anything about this issue because it's going on now, so if we don't legislate one way or the other, we will have a quandary as to what to do with the ten or twenty or thirty, whatever it is now, how we're going to, you know, deal with those people, so it's my only concern.
I mean, I think we've also discussed in, in the comprehensive planning committee meetings, how important it was to get a handle on it, not only to be able to control impacts on neighborhoods, but also to be sure that the, that the facilities are safe from, from a health and, you know, fire code, et cetera, so just having random rentals, it's not really benefiting the community in terms of safety.
Correct.
So that was another reason we tried.
Number of people and that sort of thing as well. And that's actually, I was looking at a lot of New York City case law, because they banned them, I guess it's, it's a New York State law too, about three, I guess it's three or more dwelling units in one building, so it's apartment buildings mostly.
They banned them for that?
It's the New York State law, actually, and Airbnb's still in the state, but New York City is actually enforcing it with kind of obscure kind of zoning laws and that sort of thing, like you have to have sprinklers, things like that, which isn't that obscure, but it's like a, it's kind of a back-end way of doing it, there's actually a thousand dollar fine for advertising on Airbnb or VRB in New York City for those type of properties. So I think a single-family house in New York City is okay, but a, but, you know, an apartment building is, an apartment in an apartment building is no, except if you're living there and there's less than one or two people only, so it's very specific, but it was just interesting that there's kind of state law as well as New York City law.
So we have two things that we do on this, we have this FEI, we have this FTEIS thing, and then we have an actual adopt of the.
Actual plan.
Right.
Both of them are.
Right. We're going to read the whole five hundred pages.
No. Not even with a sip of water, but I will read the, the environmental findings for the secret review of the comprehensive plan update first. Whereas on May 7th, 2018, the Board of Trustees, acting as the lead agency under the state Environmental Quality Review Act, accepted the final generic environmental impacts statement related to the 2018 comprehensive plan update. And whereas a copy of the accepted FTEIS was posted on the Village of Irvington website for public review, and a copy of the FTEIS was placed on a file with the village clerk, and a written comment period was established until May 21st, 2018, I don't think we received any written correspondence from you.
Just.
Just, well, other than people in the room.
Yes.
And whereas the Board of Trustees has prepared a secret finding statement with respect to the CPU, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees adopts the secret finding statement with respect to the CPU as attached, and further resolved that a notice of adoption of the secret findings statement shall be published in the environmental notice bulletin and a secret finding statement posted on the Irvington, Village of Irvington website. Make a motion if I got a second. Paul in favor?
All right. Before you go to the comprehensive plan first, I just want to say that I, I know we have talked as a board, not all of us, some, there were some changes, but we've talked for three or maybe four years, I can't remember how long, about the importance of updating the old comprehensive plan, and so I just want to say that I'm really happy that we accomplished that task. I was surprised at, relatively speaking, how easy it went and was a lot of, in the committees, there was a lot, not totally unanimity, unanimity, but there was a lot of agreement in general, and there was also very cordial disagreement, when there was disagreement, so, and I think that's come forward in the, in the responses and what got into the comprehensive plan update recommendations. So I just want to say that because I know at one of our earlier recent meetings, someone was implying that it was a rigged process and not fair and all that, and I think it, you know, to my mind, it was far from that, and maybe it was a little loose, but.
And I thought the, ironically, the part that they considered the rigged part was our kind of conscious effort to have both sides of, every issue represented, you know, and I think that, you know, it was open to anybody who was interested in it as well, you know, so I think that it was, you know, a, it's a tough thing to do, because it's not regular business, you know, to have a comprehensive plan where to start, you know, so I thought David Smith was, was very good in the beginning, and I think Larry and, and Mary Ann really carried it home.
Wonderful job, you have fabulous job.
Especially the, the poetic waxes of, of Mary Ann, she was rewriting things.
One piece.
It would have, it would have been very difficult to get through it without all that heavy lifting, so.
So, yeah, so I'm actually very proud of the village for having accomplished this in, you know, within a reasonable time of what was expected, not too much delay, and I think it's going to be useful as guidelines for us for the next ten years.
I have to say, it has about the shortest resolution of any, for any big project ever.
Oh, you're about to read a short one, right?
Yeah, it's always a one, it's a one-liner. It's all she wrote. Fragment of steps.
I've got, I've got to find the page now.
Anybody else want to say anything, or?
No, wait.
It's like this.
Okay, go ahead, I know what it says.
You can almost memorize it.
It's good.
Resolved to the 2018 comprehensive plan update. I'll make a motion if I got a second.
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is approval of cooperation agreement with the County of Westchester for the purpose of undertaking community development programs, EBDG.
Oh, stay.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate all the input.
So this is a, this is a program that some of you may be familiar with, that has been, in the past, there's been a consortium of communities in Westchester that historically had gotten together to obtain community development funds for the, on a countywide basis. The county was the, the entity that coordinated all of that, the communities, nearly every community in Westchester was part of the consortium initially. The consortium was, you know, in, in part, the subject of an extensive lawsuit that everyone knows about, and so not long after that, the consortium was disbanded by the, by the county, and the county is now looking to put the consortium back together, so I don't know whether it's going forward or not a hundred percent, only because I imagine it depends on how many communities are interested. From Irvington's standpoint, community development funds are typically obtained by addressing individuals with low moderate income, and we have no census blocks in Irvington that are considered low to moderate income, a certain threshold of, of individuals within those blocks. So competing for these funds on a statewide level would be very difficult for Irvington. The only real way that we can look to have any funds come to us as part of a community development program is what's called a limited clientele. So they are improvements or purchases that affect a specific group of people, and those people are determined through surveys to be of low moderate income level. In our case, historically, it's been our senior citizens, so we have obtained funds for our senior citizens program, whether it's the construction of our senior center, the addition, or the purchase of, of our senior bus, of which we're in need of a replacement right now, so my recommendation is, is that we, we join back up with the consortium in an effort to obtain some funding and be supportive of the effort, but of course, there's no guarantees, but that's, likely the only opportunities lie within our seniors, senior citizen program as far as funding goes.
That's the meeting, we're going to.
Yes, yes, correct. Yep. So they're looking, the county is looking for participating communities to sign a cooperation agreement by the end of this month, I believe it is, so here we are.
So, I mean, we're not, as very little, we're going to be able to get out of this So, I mean, we're not, there's very little, we're going to be able to get out of this besides just being a supportive community.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we have a need for a senior bus. There may be other needs that our senior program has down the road, but right now the only, the only project identified would be the replacement of our senior bus for transportation.
But it helps the county as a whole for other communities that do qualify, if, as a whole county, we have a lot of input from many municipalities, so we're helping our neighbors as well.
Population wise, yeah, not that we contribute a tremendous population, but yes.
Yes. We want to share.
Right.
I thought they'd mentioned somewhere in there about housing projections, housing requirements or something. There was some comment that sounded like it was referring to kind of the HUD requirement for certain, for municipalities to try to add affordable housing or equalize.
Right, I think there's certain county policies that we need to be signed on to. I think one of them is the discretionary funding policy. We've...
We've done that already.
We're fully up to speed on that, yes.
Totally in favor of this?
I thought it was interesting, like, you know, having a policy prohibiting the use of excessive force by law enforcement agencies within this jurisdiction. Yes, any individuals engaged in ongoing civil rights, it's like it's...
We have that as well, but...
But it's kind of like an interesting kind of collection of...
We can't beat them up first?
I think I was going to read the resolved paragraph.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's totally fine.
Resolved that Lawrence S. Schopler, Village Administrator, be and hereby is authorized to execute a cooperation agreement between the Village of Irvington and the County of Westchester for the purposes of undertaking community development program pursuant to the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, and Title II of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 as amended. I'll make a motion if I can have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Participation in a waste recycling shared service program sponsored by Sustainable Westchester.
Okay, so I'll try to avoid having a presentation about this, but I'll at least describe what this is about. It's fairly minor, but they did want a resolution from the board indicating your willingness to participate.
Was that just us off?
I think that was just us. It was so exciting, I'm going to repeat it. So...
It's pretty cool.
The short, yeah, the short answer is this. Sustainable Westchester has worked out an arrangement with a software vendor, website operator, whatever you want to call it, from out west somewhere, to provide a service that they call recollect? I forgot exactly.
Recite.
Recollect, yes. And it will deliver several key pieces of information to our residents through a website tool that'll be placed on our village website. The information, primary information it'll deliver, and there's a few bits and pieces that I won't go into, but the primary information is address-specific recycling information or municipality-specific recycling information about any item that anyone enters into the, into this page. So if a person is interested in recycling X, it will tell you exactly what to do with that item if it's recycled, in fact. That's one interesting piece of information. The other interesting piece of information, which I think is more important from a modernization standpoint, is it will provide address-specific, an address-specific sanitation calendar, a full calendar if someone wants to print it out and put it on their refrigerator, like traditionally, or access to it through a typical calendar application or website, I mean, an app with push notifications about when your garbage is being picked up, or if it's, or if there's a change in schedule or anything like that. Yeah, exactly. So, which would eventually lead to, and again, not for decision tonight, but would eventually lead to the elimination of the printed calendar being mailed to every house. It's an enormous expense. Doesn't mean we can't still stay in contact with a mailing, but it doesn't have to be a multi-color, very expensive calendar, so. So that's the short discussion. The bigger picture here is that this is typically about a $4,000 a year subscription, depends on the population. There's a fair amount of setup work that goes involved, that's involved in this. The Sustainable Westchester has agreed to take on the local support for the product in exchange for a significant pricing reduction. So the pricing is anywhere from $1,500 a year up to $7,000 depending on population, so we're down at the 1,800 level. And we kind of did a little verification in the room at the time of the presentation. The city of White Plains would be $7,000, given their population. They had just recently signed a contract with this company for $14,000. So the savings are real, and more than that, I don't think I need to go into, but the bottom line is, for $1,800, I think it's worth it, and if we can manage to move beyond this printed calendar, we'll be in good shape.
I thought the idea of an Irvington branded trash shop was interesting for you.
Yeah, essentially, that's what it would be.
Larry's face on it.
Yeah, no, no, thanks. Yeah, so...
Do we know how long this company has been doing this?
No, I didn't get any history on it.
Are they, I think they're up to the job.
Again, it's a combined project, research project by Sustainable Westchester that we're taking advantage of, so I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but...
The fact that they're billiarding it as a white label series of products, and then they, you know, the website and the app are both quote-unquote white label, which means they've generified it and made it quite easy just to brand it by the community.
City of Rye is the most...
Are you using them?
They're using it already, and it's up and running. I think White Plains is kind of limited right now, they have a bigger rollout process, as you can imagine, but the City of Rye is up and running, and it seems to work nice.
Is this charge right? Actually, it's 1,700.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry, yeah, I was doing it from memory from the meeting, but okay.
Seventy-nine bucks.
Good. Thank you, you just saved us $100.
I know. I guess I had read it before, I thought it was 1,700, okay.
Right now, they're just looking for our, raise our hand if you want to participate.
If you read it for more than 15 minutes, you just lost it on.
That's good.
Target also thought it might have had the functionality, and this was what we, you know, we got to talk about briefly, I thought it had the functionality that he actually go in there and say, hey, no one picked up my garbage today.
Yeah, this, it says that.
It does.
We didn't focus on it.
Yeah, the presentation didn't focus on that, but apparently then it would go directly to DPW, so it doesn't go to Brenda, or Larry, or me.
Well, it'll still go to you, don't worry.
Exactly, if he can recycle that, that was.
Right.
But I think it sounds fun.
It's worth a shot.
It's worth a shot.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, we only committed for one year?
I believe so, yeah.
Or...
Yeah, well, we'll see when we actually sign on and do this, but yes.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby expresses its intent to participate in the Waste Recycling Shared Services Program as proposed by Sustainable Westchester, and describing the documentation submitted to the Board subject to the final review of the service agreement. I'll make a motion if I got a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eleven, approval of grant agreement with the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York for the construction of accessible pedestrian sidewalk ramps along Main Street.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, actually, right. So, yeah, so this is, this is a project I think I've been talking about for a while.
Make a sidewalk ramp...
I know, I know. So $125,000 grant from New York State through the state and municipal fund that they have. The Dormitory Authority is the entity that's administering the grant, and this is...
Sounds...
Listen, I only passed along the documentation, I don't make the rules. But this is a project to install essentially two crossings that will include the brick pavers like we have up at the aqueduct, and the, and hopefully the electronic pedestrian warning signals at those locations as well. So that's two separate, not two full intersections, but two separate crossings. Right now, those are, those are tentatively marked off as, I believe, Eckers Street near the rec center and Dutcher Street near the bank. Bank? I think so.
Revenge.
Am I one down? Yeah, down by the bank, yeah. Well, anyway, but again, something's to change, we haven't done it yet, so, but it's, it's out there, and it's being, it, actually, we're trying to come up with a way to integrate this money into the Main Street handicap ramp project that's going on, which is also the Station Road sidewalk plan. So this, we're trying to put it all together and feed this money into the federal project.
Administration was...
We're hoping, yeah, it's actually an interesting, well, just from a coordination standpoint, would make more sense, but that's it. But the first step is to...
Nothing says it has to make sense.
Well, I know.
Is there a timeline on how fast this has to be done?
I don't believe that it's anything that causes concern, the rest of the project is proceeding, you know, well within this, so. And we've been waiting for them, frankly.
Okay.
It would be kind of ironic.
Well, good, we love grants.
Yeah, right, yeah. Oh, that's my application, that's right. 1872.
Good.
Yeah.
Resolved to approve the grant agreement with the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York to provide $520,000 from the state municipal facilities program, grant for the Main Street pedestrian walkway construction project, and further resolved to authorize the village administrator to execute said agreement and any other documents necessary to effectuate the provisions of the grant. I'll make a motion if I got a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of salary increases for non-union employees.
These are, these are consistent with the CSEA union contract, which is what our typical, our typical path is.
Anyone have any questions on this, or?
No.
These are standards, so. Resolved to modify the annual salaries and hourly rates effective on the dates shown below, effective June 1, 2018, as detailed, all of them, I think, are that date, so. I'll make a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just as an aside, are there any bonuses given out by the village?
No.
For a performance-related?
Not unless you decide, but no.
Okay, so doing jujitsu on a...
The closest that we may have are specific stipends, so if an employee takes on a particular role that may have been done outside of our organization and brings it in-house, there may be a stipend associated with that, but that's, there's only a handful of those.
Okay.
Yep.
Next up is award of purchase contract 2018-12 for miscellaneous hardware and supplies.
Pretty straightforward, this, we purchased more than $20,000 worth of hardware in any given year, so the state requires, even though individual purchases are typically not more than 20,000, but in the aggregate, we purchased more than 20, so we do go out to bid, we did only receive one bid, I believe, in this case, which was Irvington Hardware. You should know also that we do have a mileage limitation on that because it's, would be highly impractical for our village forces to be going...
Driving across...
Way beyond, yeah, exactly, way beyond our borders. It does go beyond our borders, but way beyond this area of the county. So I think it's 15 miles or something, 15, thereabouts, it's not, it's not a tremendously big circle.
Seal bids were received and opened on May 16, 2018, at 11 AM in Village Hall, as follows: Irvington Hardware, U.N. Main Street, Irvington, New York, 10% discount on a one-by-one basis, 20% on case bulk quantities. Whereas the village administrator reviewed the bids submitted and determined that the bidder is in order in response to the specifications, now therefore be it resolved that the village administrator is authorized to execute a purchase contract for miscellaneous hardware and supplies with Irvington Hardware. I'll make a motion if I can have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Is this, they've been doing this for a while, they've been getting this contract for a while?
Yes. We also, in the past, had received a bid from Reader's Hardware, and we didn't this year. Chances are, most, we can still use them, but it probably will not exceed $20,000 from Reader's Hardware, so we still will use them when needed, but the primary is here in Irvington Hardware.
And service we've done from them has been us.
Absolutely, and then some.
Award of purchase contract 2018-13 for tree removal, tree pruning, and stump grinding.
So, again, same thing, we, many of our jobs are less than $20,000, but in the aggregate, we pay, we certainly spend more than 20 on tree care. The low bidder is the contractor that we currently use, there were three bids received, two of them were fairly close together, one was not, but we certainly are satisfied with the low bidder, so.
Will we, does this include consultation time, or is that above and beyond this contract?
I don't think we pay extra for consultation time, to be honest with you. I think it's...
Because that's pretty useful to DPW, so...
Yeah, no, and they do, they use it, as you know, but I don't believe we're charged extra. I suppose if it became...
Excessive.
Excessive, there may be some, but that is, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Whereas sealed bids were received and opened on May 16, 2018, at 11 AM in Village Hall, as follows: Company to Care of Trees, total cost $52,645. Emerald Tree &amp; Trump Care, $65,000. Dragon Eddie Brothers Nursery &amp; Flowers, Inc., $143,250. Whereas the village administrator reviewed the bids submitted and determined that the lowest bidder is in order in response to the specifications, now therefore be it resolved that the village administrator is authorized to execute a purchase contract for tree removal, tree pruning, and stump grinding with the Care of Trees, Inc., for the unit prices specified. I will make a motion if I can have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
And if you're out there caring trees, we all could use some baseball caps. Just kidding.
Reports of boards, standing committees, and officers, trustee liaisons of boards.
Well, I did my, effectively did my reporting already, so.
Excellent. Doc?
The next meeting of the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee is this Wednesday, the 23rd, 7 PM, at the Senior Center. The Irvington Woods Committee would like to remind the community about their Rockin' at the ONC event that's scheduled for Sunday, June 3, 5 to 7 PM. Music, food, beer, wine, and night, to enjoy the ONC and our gardens, music by Divine Rod. Special thanks to the Irvington Beautification Committee for all their work last week decorating the window boxes on Main Street. A quick shout-out to members Anne Myers, Rita Milo, Heather Bancroft, Pat Manfredi, Andrea Kish, Maria Valescu, Cindy Link, twice, Renee Shamish, Mary Nizwecki, and Laura Antinett. Day camp registration continues, Teenscape has a few spots open still, 2018 park permits are now available, 2018 kayak rentals are available, tennis court lights are on until 10 PM every day, park permits are required, and please remember that dogs must be on leash, whether you're in the Irvington Woods or Holsey Pond, it's the law.
That's it?
That's it. Tom?
Okay, so the Water Department, pretty water meters, spring maintenance, there were valves on Harriman Road for low-service transfer tank renovation, they worked on that. There was a sewer backup on Park Road that was cleared, they collect water samples for the EPA. From Greg, the Department of Public Works, as you all know, he had two severe thunderstorms, I certainly know, I had a, lost a big part of a tree. They also assisted the Parks Department in hauling the materials for the O'Hara Nature Center. There was, they repaired the broken sidewalk, the curb and apron on South Eckers. They did line painting, catch basins, and filling potholes. Historic District Committee, the Farmer's Market, the theater, the downtown, my roles with all of them. I have a letter to review from the Historic District Committee that summarizes their years of work, and consider that they are basically finishing all the work that they have done, and I'm going to review it and see if it's complete and they feel they have finished their tasks. Farmer's Market begins in June, so that would be coming right up, right? That's, then on Sundays. Irvington Town Old Theater has an event this week, right, Brian? It's the, isn't the gun violence?
That's right, I should have mentioned that.
Yeah.
Gun violence discussion Wednesday, this Wednesday night at 7 PM.
7:30.
7:30, I'll confirm that.
Right.
I guess I meant to mention that.
A very exceptional high school student who has organized this, what's his name? Roth?
Yeah.
And I think it will be very well.
Sam Roth.
Was it?
Sam Roth.
Sam, 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 and so, organized by a high school student, and I'm sure many high school students will attend, I think they plan to, but they certainly would be happy to have many adults from the community attend as well.
Looks like a special speaker, don't we?
Several, yes.
Yeah, there's gotta be a panel discussion, it's gonna be pretty interesting, so, it's gonna be moderated by the former head of the Brady Commission, and Barry Grobert, who heads up Mahomes, Demanded Action for Westchester County, is gonna be on the panel, Sarah Winter, who herself was a victim of gun violence in her family back in Australia, is gonna speak on the panel, and Howie Stern as well, who's a ATF, current ATF agent, is also gonna be on the panel.
I thought I heard somewhere that Stuart Cousins was going to be giving us a keynote.
Wasn't able to confirm that, she, her schedule is so tight that she's not sure she's gonna be able to make it, they're hoping that she's gonna be able to.
She's hoping, yeah, she's getting on the stomach.
Yeah, exactly, so, but it is indeed 7:30 on Wednesday.
And the Town Hall Theater, and it's not, there's no charge, right?
Nope.
No.
That's true.
You gotta check your guns at the door.
So, in terms of the Chamber of Commerce, I've been spending a lot of time with them, as has Brenda, has met Nick Campbell now, in relationship to their work, doing a lot of the organizing of the Celebrate Irvington Festival, but Brenda still has a role in terms of, you know, the insurance by the village, and also appreciate your assistance in this, and we'll have more to say about that, but as we get closer to that again.
Perfect.
That's it.
Village administrator's report.
So, just a quick note, I have a meeting scheduled on Thursday with representatives of the Holy Spirit Association at their East Garden property. The Hudson View Park Culvert Project looks like it will be, need to go on to their property not too far, maybe 10 feet, we're not really sure, but we're meeting with them, we had not contacted them previously about that, but now that the surveys are in, we see where things need to go.
Which property was it?
Holy Spirit Association.
No, no, you said the garden property?
East Garden, I mean, that's.
The San and the Street?
It's the name of the property, I think.
Oh, name of the property.
Yeah, so, we're meeting with them on Thursday to introduce them to the topic, and, you know, show them some plans, so it's, our engineer and Jim Englishby and I will be going out to meet with them. And the other thing is, in all seriousness, congratulations on adopting your comprehensive plan update, but now the real work starts, to be honest with you, I think some of the stuff's gonna be pretty difficult, but, but it was still a good project, and I know you mentioned it was relatively on time, and actually, it was five months late, and I think we spent about five months gathering extra feedback from people over the course of the late summer into the fall, so, besides that, which I think is a worthy thing to do, it was pretty much right on time.
The committees themselves were pretty much on time.
Yeah, they were good, yeah, we were on good pace, except for that gathering the extra feedback, but I think.
It was worth it.
It made sense to do it, to be honest with you, yeah.
I think Brian is right, that, you know, we need to thank Mary Ann for a yeoman's job of pulling it all together.
For sure.
And that was like, I wouldn't wanna do that.
I don't know if I could, if you gave me an unlimited amount of time.
Hey, how about tomorrow? Yes, I agree.
That's it?
Yep.
Village Square Treasurer's report?
Tax bills are going out next week sometime, they'll be wrapping up our fiscal year, they're getting ready for our audit, that's happening.
Village Treasurer.
Just to say, now that the comp plan for that update's been adopted, I'll be working on, well, many of the recommendations are to, for changes in the law, you know, we've started on a couple of, a couple of them will probably get some local loss ready to announce the next meeting, and then just work through them one by one, I mean, you get the easy ones, and.
Bees are next, right?
Bees.
Bees.
Bees?
I think so.
Meas and goots?
Just trying to make the change. Public comment, even Rick Clough, I feel kinda bad now.
Wow.
Review, action items, I?
I didn't have any other than, you'll be getting a copy of this letter, but that's not gonna go on my list.
Yeah, and to pass everything in the comprehensive plan, put that out there?
Yeah, oh, it's all done.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session regarding personnel matter in the water department, if I can get a second. All in favor?